Call the meeting door. Please stand for the flag salute.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Bolan.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
And Counselor Grizzle and Rieskamp are absent this evening.
Thank you. Approval of council minutes, March 11th, 2015, regular session, and March 15th, 2015, noon work session minutes. Any questions or any changes or corrections?
I'd move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are passed. Consent calendar, we have the agenda for tonight. Bid authorization for the Oak Street project, the board minutes for the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, liquor license approvals for Boulder Falls Inn, and for A&amp;J Convenience Store. Any corrections or additions to those?
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar for tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved.
May I ask questions?
Not at this time. There will be a comment period here in a minute or so.
Okay.
Okay, I have a proclamation presentation, I have a couple of them tonight. And the first will be Arbor Day, Saturday, April 11th. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 11th, as Arbor Day in the City of Lebanon. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Next is the National Volunteer Week. Proclamation, April 12th through the 18th. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that change the world, and whereas individuals and communities at the center of social change discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million people is a great treasure, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby proclaim April 12th through the 18th, 2015, National Volunteer Week in the City of Lebanon, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. And anyone who's lived here any amount of time knows that our town volunteers a lot. We have a lot of really strong volunteers and it makes our community a great place to live. And lastly, Older Americans Month. Whereas 24,898 citizens that are ages 60 and older make their home in Lynn County, Oregon. The City of Lebanon is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in Lebanon have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, young and old, by helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults with the people who serve and support them as a powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community of Lebanon. And if you haven't been there, we have an awesome senior center, and they do a great job over there, and they serve a lot of seniors. We've got a garden over there now, and they've got some great activities, so really happy with our senior center.
Those of us who are older than dirt appreciate that.
Yes. Okay. And next up, we have public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak?
Hello, what I'm doing up here?
Yes, please.
Sign in here?
There's a sign-in sheet there, yes.
My name's Sandra Reagan, and I live at 970 Wausum Street. We got notice about the foreign trigger annexation, and this property has a...
If I can interrupt you, and I apologize, we invited you up, but there'll actually be a public hearing on an annexation, and we will invite people up to speak either in pro or against that public hearing. So you'll definitely get a chance to talk, but if what you want to address is the annexation, it's probably better that you do it at that time. You're already all signed in and everything, you won't have to do that again.
Oh, okay.
It'll be just a minute.
In that way, it'll be part of the record for that hearing. Okay?
I'll follow the rules.
Thank you.
No, that's fine.
No problem. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address other items?
Where's Bill?
Okay. Seen none then, we will move on to the item number one, which is the public hearing. And we'll have Walt Wendelowski come up.
Need to go through my... Yes. Actually, sorry, I called you up a little bit premature, but that's okay. Need you up here. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz, I'm the mayor of Lebanon, and I'll be presiding over the hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file number 1501-03, a request for annexation by Marvin and Lois Colleen Borntrager. The hearing is now open. Land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The city attorney will review this material. Your patience is appreciated as he goes through these statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council, the procedures are posted on the wall in several locations. Procedures are followed to make sure that everyone has a fair opportunity to present the case and that we follow Oregon law. At the commencement of the hearing, the councilor shall announce any ex-party contact or conflicts of interest. Ex-party contact is contact with anyone outside the meeting or with the property itself. A conflict of interest is when a councilor or a member of the councilor's family stands to profit in some way from the outcome of the decision. We'll start out with a staff report. The staff report will be presented. It should include information which staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulation which staff believes to be relevant to the issues of the hearing. We'll then allow questions of staff by the council. We'll then open it up to public testimony. Audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed toward the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed condition of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council an opportunity to respond... Excuse me, an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. All witnesses will be asked to sign in with their name and address and state their name before they begin their testimony. Testimony of witnesses will... Both the proponents and the opponents of the issue will be given an opportunity to provide testimony. The applicant has the burden of proof. The applicant will be provided rebuttal testimony limited to answering points of evidence raised by the opponents. We'll start with proponents of the application. We will then hear from any opponents of the application and rebuttal if necessary. We'll then close the public hearing. Once the hearing is closed, will be deliberation by city council only. No new evidence will be allowed. Discussion will be limited to the city council. Generally, a decision will be made this evening. The decision will be to either approve the application where the council has found that their criteria have been proven, or deny the application if the council finds that the applicant has not sustained the burden of proof. The council may approve an application with conditions for approval which are supported by the facts in the case and the land use plan or regulations. If there are not any questions, I think, Mr. Mayor, you have already opened the public meeting, and we can ask any councilors if they have any ex-party contact or conflicts of interest to disclose.
Okay, with that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objections to the notice that was sent in this case as to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Okay. Are there any declaration of ex parte conflict... Ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
Okay. That's negative for all councilors. With that out of the way, we're ready for the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You have an application for annexation before you this evening, planning file 150103. Your packet includes necessary maps, application information, also includes an adoption ordinance, and that adoption ordinance includes an exhibit, Exhibit B, which includes detailed findings that mirror the comments and conclusions by the planning commission. This property is located between Wausum and Street and Walker Road, about 300 feet east of the intersection of Stoltz Hill Road, contains slightly less than one acre, is currently designated residential mixed density. This is vacant, has access to the two public streets, is fully served by sewer water and storm drainage. The applicant wishes simply to annex his property to the city limits. As part of the annexation, the property would automatically be rezoned to residential mixed density. I must note for the record that there is no development proposal before the city council or even the planning department at this time. For the record, with the exception of a single-family home or duplex, any land use development on this site will require a land use review. The department may also note that the application to affected agencies, area property owners and DLCD, at the time of the commission hearing, there were no comments submitted. The decision for the annexation is found in our Lebanon Development Code, Chapter 16.26. I noted earlier that Exhibit B of the ordinance does contain detailed findings. I'll just briefly summarize for the record that this property lies within the UGB. Land within the city limits is located adjacent to the site to the south and northeast, being within the UGB. The plan certainly recognizes this property as necessary to accommodate future urban growth, and most importantly, services and improved streets are in place to serve any future development on this site. Upon annexation, the property is assigned to zone consistent with the comm plan. For proof, the land will be automatically zoned residential mixed density. As the annexation request complies with the applicable decision criteria, is the planning commission's recommendation that the city council approve the annexation and zone change request. Unless there are any other questions, that concludes the staff report.
Any questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, the applicant testimony? If the applicant would like to speak, or are they here?
It's my understanding the applicant is not here this evening.
Okay. Okay, and in that case, then we will go... Anyone who would like to speak for the annexation? This would be proponents of the annexation. Time to speak? And at this time, seen no proponents, is there any opponents that would like to speak? If this is a time that you'd like to speak against it, this would be a time you could come up.
My name's Sandra Reagan, and I live at 970 Wausum, and I'm not against or for it. I'm here just so that I can be educated on what they're actually doing with the property, and to voice some concerns that we're a residential area, we're low traffic on Wausum Street. We've had some speeding, some other issues, and the police department has managed to get that, you know, calmed down. And so I just want to be a voice here with whoever is developing this property, and a voice for our neighborhood that we're a residential area, we care about our neighbors, and we're here, and we want to be visible.
Very good. And as Walt mentioned too, that this is residential mixed, was that correct?
Mixed residential.
So this would just be residential, this would not be any commercial developments or anything like that would go there.
Okay, and would that also include the possibility of like apartment, two-level complexes, those sort of things in that mixed-use definition?
Yeah. Walt, would you come up, Walt, to answer that?
Thank you again, Mayor. Just want to make two points on this, is the residential mixed-density zone allows a variety of residential uses, anything from single-family homes to multifamily development. However, I do want to emphasize there is no development proposal at this time. They can get a permit for a single-family home or duplex on about a one-acre site tomorrow, that would not be an issue. However, if they're going to have development that exceeds that level, a triplex, any apartment complex, that sort of thing, that will require at least a land use application before the planning department, and potentially a hearing before the planning commission. In both cases, the adjacent property owners are notified of the action and have an opportunity to comment, also have appeal rights, and if it goes to the commission, they have an opportunity to be heard there as well, and even appeal to the city council if need be.
Very good.
It's very good.
Did that help?
Yes, that helps very much.
Good. Very good. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak against the annexation? We don't have any rebuttal. At this point, we'll close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and the city staff. Any discussion, questions? Okay, at this point, I'll call for a motion. Actually, the city attorney, have him read the ordinance.
Ordinance bill number 2015-2, ordinance number 2858, a bill for an ordinance in annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, city planning file 150103, Marvin and Louis Colleen Borntrager.
Thank you.
I would move for approval of the annexation and establishing the residential mixed-density ZRM zone on the newly annexed property.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the annexation 150103. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the request pass. Next up, number two, deadly physical force plan, Captain Greg Burrows, Lebanon Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. What we have in front of you, or should have in front of you, is a letter from the Lynn County District Attorney, Doug Martini, and what he's requesting is some change to the deadly physical force plan for Lynn County. And just to review that a little bit for you, back in 2007, Senate Bill 111 required every county to come up with a protocol for policies and procedures, how they would deal with the use of deadly physical force by a peace officer. That has been done, it's been put in place, and it has been working. Over the last year, there's been some questions as to the vagueness of what happens when a police officer uses deadly physical force but nobody is hurt or killed, i.e., two nights ago, deputy shot at a gentleman and missed. Should that be investigated the same way? His interpretation of the law is that it probably should be. They went to all of the heads of the departments within Lynn County, Sheriff's Office, State Police, all the chiefs of police, everybody agreed, they've signed off on this, and as the governing agency over each of those agencies, the councils and county commissioners have to also adopt that. So that's what he's asking you to do, is to adopt this change that just gets rid of the vagueness about the deadly use of physical force. If it does not injure somebody or does not kill somebody, it will still be investigated by the way the Senate bill prescribed it to be.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, very good.
I agree publicly too.
I do too. This would also have covered the one that happened not too long ago in Albany in the parking lot.
I believe that's probably what started this.
Oh, okay.
And two nights ago, this was another situation of the very same thing.
Okay. I like the plan. I've been a big fan of this, and I think it's a good update. Any other questions?
Move for approval.
I'll read it.
Okay, yeah, I need the city attorney to read the...
Resolution number 2015-10, a resolution of the Lebanon City Council amending resolution 2014-6 and approving the updated deadly physical force plan for Lynn County.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2015-10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The resolution passes. Thank you, Captain. Number three, supplemental budget plan, grant for police department recording system upgrades. Dean Baugh, financial manager.
Since our budget was approved last year, the police have applied for and received a grant for equipment to upgrade their three interview rooms. It sounds funny when you read this. We have three interview rooms made for high-quality equipment, but what we've got there is already outdated. It's only five years old, but that's the way technology goes. So they received this grant, it will allow them to replace the cameras in each room and add an additional camera, so they'll get a better view of the suspect as they're being questioned, the audio equipment, the servers that maintain all that, basically to upgrade all three rooms and all the equipment there. I think there was a slight in-kind match, and so that's all figured in. That's the report Frank wanted me to give you, and if there's any questions, he's not here to answer. No. Greg said he can answer any questions.
This is the train station.
So Greg says if you have any questions, he's here, he can answer the questions for you. If that's the staff report, we request that you approve the budget amendment.
I do have a question. Let me get some time here.
It's a long train tonight.
It is. Lot of wood. Okay, maybe I can... I know. Okay, let me try, see if you can ask a question, maybe you can hear me. My question was about the system that we have right now. What does it not do? And I'm just like, is it just not a real good picture?
It's just not working.
It's not?
It's old enough technology, that was put in the building when we moved in in July of '09.
Oh, okay.
So it's up on six years now.
Yeah.
And it's just, like all other electronic stuff, it's not worth trying to fix if we could even get the stuff to fix it.
Okay. Does it record video and audio? Or did I read... It does record audio?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a question, Robert?
Yeah, I just wondered what the life cycle of this new stuff is.
You know, who knows? Could be outdated tomorrow. This is the latest and greatest stuff on the market. It's what the Department of Justice is allowing us to get under their grant. They're reimbursing us fully for it.
So you don't know where this particular product is in its life cycle?
I do not know that, no.
And I think when we look at IT equipment, I think that's one of the prudent things that we ought to consider each time, is to make sure that we do buy something that's got some extended expectations of maintenance support, and it's not at the point where it's being phased out of production. And I don't know if you have the ability to tweak the type of equipment that you order, but it is a grant-funded project, and it's not coming out of city funds, but nevertheless, taxpayer dollars are involved in it, and I think it behooves us to, if we have a chance, to try to buy, in fact, what is the latest in production.
Right. And I can't talk to the specifics of what the equipment is, but a lot of time on these grants, they tell you what equipment you're buying.
Yeah, and maybe...
Yeah, we don't have any say.
And maybe that's the case, so... And my second part of my question was, is are we working with our IT department to analyze that, those items before the purchase is made? Because they may have some suggestions on a particular model number that might still be within the parameters of the grant, that might give you that enhanced lifetime.
Brent Hurst is totally involved in this thing, he's going to be the one putting it together, and I mean, so he's got his hands in this whole thing.
Okay, good, thanks.
And I can't imagine that they would want to spend money with a grant and put something that's an old product in there. I just...
Oh, no. That's... Mayor, I'm sorry, that's not necessarily an appropriate assumption when it comes to federal government.
That's true. You've worked with federal government more than I have, so...
So...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, would you like to read the resolution?
Resolution number 2015-11, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget amendment to the City of Lebanon 2014-15 budget.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution 2015-11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, it's been approved. Financial policies, Dean Baugh.
Finally, the end of the two-year process, getting these here in front of you. So the one thing I want to point out is, as we start looking at this, the important part here is the kind of the two lines or two paragraphs in the memo. The comprehensive financial management policies are the tools to be used to ensure the city is financially able to meet its current and future service needs. The individual policies attached set a basis for the financial planning, reporting, and internal management of the city. And the next part is, these policies are the basic framework for overall financial management of the city, guides to day-to-day and long-term financial planning. So that's important. The council's kind of sitting down and saying, this is how we want you to operate, by these policies, so we can kind of keep on a stable footing as we go forward. So we have a whole list of policies. A lot of these we do right now, it's just never been written down here. And that's why we started this process of writing out what we do. Some of them are brand-new items that have come up in the last couple of years, the identity fraud, the identity theft. Those are things that came out in the last couple of years that the GFOA and them have recommended that we put out there. Part of this is what the federal government calls their red flag rules. You know, how can you tell if something's not right? And that's kind of what you're setting out. How do you... What should an employee do if they suspect fraud? Who do they go to? Right now, if an employee suspects it, what do they do? Who do they talk to? Well, this lays out the procedures right here for them. Who would they go to? There's two policies that we don't have included in this packet, the investment policy, which you guys approved in 2012, so we've already updated that. And so when this gets put together in its little book, the investment policy will be slipped in. And then there will be a purchasing policy coming a little later on. It's not here because there's still a few items that we're still working with, this new bank, we may be looking at purchase cards, different items, as to where we write up our purchasing policy. So I didn't want to put it in and come back in a month and say, oh, now we need to update it. So we're just going to wait and bring that back to you at a future date. So the big one that we wanted to point out was the reserve policy, which is on page 22. And when you get this year's budget, not assuming that you're going to pass this, but we've written the budget in accordance of this one policy. In the past, the council had an unwritten rule or goal of a 10% contingency. What we've set out in here for the general fund is a 17... Yeah, I can't even talk. 17% contingency, which is about two to three months of operating funds. That's our goal. The second goal, you'll find on page 24, very last, item number four, there's also a 2% working contingency. What that is, is you can say it's the oops factor. As we come through the year, we say, oops, we missed something in the budget. As we come through the year, we say, oops, we need, we missed something in the budget, we need to adjust something. That's what we would use to adjust our budget throughout the year. But we can't spend it according to Oregon law unless we bring a budget amendment back to the council.
Is that on top of the 17%?
On top of the 17%. So our overall goal is a 19%.
Okay.
2% working, 17. Currently, with the budget that we're bringing, and I've got it all over my desk, we're projecting an 8.1% contingency in the budget we're going to present to you at the end of this month. I'll be bringing it to you. And then we're working, according to this policy, we have to come up with a plan saying, okay, we're below 17, we're at 8, how are we going to get there? Doesn't have to be done in one year. We could say it's going to take us three or four years to get there, but we have to have a plan on how to get there. So Gary and I have already been talking about this. So that's the big one I want to bring out. I gave these two guys to you about a week and a half or so ago. So if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer any questions. If you read this again next week and have a question, come in and see me. Love to talk about it.
Sure. First of all, I want to recognize Dean's hard work on these policies, his staff too. I can tell you that Dean and I have spent many hours looking at these things, debating the different policies. There's been a review by the department staff, department heads. So this is something that's been, I think, fairly thoroughly vetted out by the staff. And then on the contingency numbers, when we look at the 17%, that's a number that comes out of the GFOA, which is the General Finance Officers Association, and recommendations they made back in 2002 for general purpose governments, for their general fund, depending on the type of government you are, there were some recommendations about the level of reserve that you should have. Their recommendation was one to two months in reserve as a minimum. So we've gone for the two months, which is the 17%. The 2% is that amount that, you know, occasionally, we may come to you in the course of a budget year and say, we need to transfer some money in a budget amendment out of contingency and spend it on something we didn't anticipate. That's the 2%. The 17% is money we set aside for cash flow management, for things like, you know, we get our property tax in, I think it's July or June.
Starts in November, October, November to December.
Right, different state, sorry. We get two big property tax payments in the course of a fiscal year. The other 10 months, we don't have that income coming in, and so you have a spike in our fund balance, you know, month to month, and you have to have enough money to kind of coast and glide down until the next one hits. So that's what that 17% is there for, and it's also there for a crisis. So like if the bottom falls out of a revenue source that we didn't anticipate in the mid-part of a fiscal year, we don't have to necessarily panic in, we may have the luxury, because we have reserves, to get ourselves through that fiscal year and give some thoughtful consideration to how we want to handle the changes in our revenue forecast. So that's what this is all about, and I wanted to make sure you all understood the differences between the 17% and the 2%. So I think that's, I think that covers it.
Robert?
Yeah, what kind of questions and what input will we get from the auditor? Either in the management letter or in some other document? If the 17% is not made in the given year?
It doesn't have to be. We've got a paragraph in there saying, if at this point in time or any future point in time, we drop below 70%, all we need to do is, management needs to come up with a plan saying, we plan on bringing that back up to the 70% at 2% per year for the next three years or four years. We just have to have a plan to say how we're going to get back there. You know, we don't want to all of a sudden drop down to 10%, and then, like Gary says, go into a crisis because we have to put the 7% back in the next year and lay off all our employees because we had to put 7% back in. No, we want to do this in a thoughtful way. When you drop below, oh, we're below, here's how we're going to get back there. And again, it could be two, three, four years. Depends on what the situation was when it happened, or, you know, if it's 2008 and we abused part of it, it could have taken six or seven years to get back up there.
Yeah. It may take a while. Just to illustrate that, back, just before I arrived here and we went through the budget, situation back in January, February of 2014, our fund balance at that point, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, but I believe it was right around 4%.
Yeah.
We've built that up since then. I think we're going to finish this year right around to 8.
Yeah.
Around 8%. So, you know, we've made some progress. We're not there, we don't, we're not saying by enacting this policy that tomorrow we're going to be at 17%. In fact, the budget that we bring you this year, we may not tell you we're going to make a lot of progress this year because so much was cut back the prior year. We're probably going to use a lot of what we've gained over this past year to catch up with our service levels. But that doesn't mean we're not addressing it. We're going to have a plan in place that, you know, maybe next year, we're going to plan on a sizable increase in the fund balance. But it gives us the ability, without too much restriction, but still a requirement, to make sure that we're always striving towards getting to our 17%.
Will that plan, in essence, be adopted when the council adopts the budget? Or must there be a separate approval of that plan in order to remain appropriate and so that the auditors don't have any?
I would see that as part of the budget process.
Yeah, we put it as saying, as part of the budget, we would say how, what our plan is to get back up there. I will let you know that I did send these all to the auditors, have them read them, if they had any suggestions, so they've also already reviewed all these policies. Like Gary said, I sent them out to the directors multiple times, got back comments from them. We've tried to vet these out real good, everybody understands them. One thing I did want to point out, it was a question we asked the auditors. These policies, when we put them in, will be for the city and they also are for the URD agency. And we did ask the auditors, do we need to go out into the agency to approve them? They said, no, we do not. Once the city adopts them, they cover, it's an umbrella over, because the agency is kind of under the city type thing. So they said it would cover both. So we don't need to go out as the agency to approve them there also.
I have a question. I didn't see it specifically, and maybe this isn't the place where this would be, but I thought part of this policy was going to be so that we don't run into a situation where a city manager, and I'm not saying you, a city manager maybe works out a deal with a company.
It's in here.
How does that work?
If you go in under the fee policy, it says the city, fees on any project can be waived at the time they're waived, there needs to be the determination where the fees are going to be paid from, like the URD, when we waived lows. Well, they're not waived, it just moved. So at the time they're waived, there's that, and if any fees over $1,000 are waived, has to come to city council for approval.
I did read that, I wasn't sure if that covered that or not.
So the city manager can do small things, but anything big is there, and anytime we bring it, there has to be, we're waiving a million, here's who's going to pay the million.
Okay.
The council looks at it.
Council has to look at it.
And the second part of that, I guess, would be making sure that it doesn't get lost? Because that's kind of what I thought happened. Does this process thing guarantee that it doesn't just kind of get put on a shelf somewhere?
Because anything over $1,000 would have to come to.
So it would be an official action that we would take? Okay.
Once the council approves it, then I'm going to record it on the balance sheet.
Perfect, okay.
As a debt.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that was taken care of.
Of official, here.
Good. Thank you for your work on this, and I know it's been two years, it's been a lot of work, but I really appreciate that, because it's something that we need as a council and as a city.
And I already have some other cities calling me saying, can we steal your work? So as soon as you approve them, I'm going to ship them off to some other people.
Can we charge a fee for that?
If you approve them.
Recommend the policies be approved.
Wait, I need to have the city attorney read the resolution.
You guys are all trying to jump ahead of me today. Resolution number 2015-12, resolution approving the City of Lebanon comprehensive financial management policies.
He stumbled over it too, see?
Recommend the policies be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial policies, resolution number 2015-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Resolution has passed.
What I'll do with these now is put them all together, and then they're going to be posted on our webpage. So if you want to read them, they'll all be out there.
Very good. Thanks again for your work. Okay, next up is the award contract for the Vine Street Water Drainage and Roadway Improvements, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you here tonight is a request to, for motion to award our Vine Street improvements project to Excadrain Construction of Albany, Oregon. As you may be aware, our maintenance crews right now are putting in, or actually have finished putting in the water line, are working on the storm drainage piece to this project. This project will do all the curbs, gutters, sidewalk, and paving, and wrap it up down there for those folks. We had six bidders on March 31st, which was actually surprising to me. I didn't think there'd be that many, since it's mostly paving and curb and gutter, and Excadrain was the lowest. They were about 13% below our engineer's estimate, so with that, I can answer any questions.
I was just down there today, and those folks need to have that thing buttoned up.
Yes, they do.
It's looking rough.
Actually, it's, our maintenance guys have done a fabulous job. They've been fast compared to the contracts that we had. They've done a really good job, so hats off to them.
What's the estimated completion time?
I think, I want to say end of May. So it's just, basically, we're going to wait for our guys to finish up a few things down there, then our contractor will come in and finish grade it, put the curbs in, pave it, and finish up the sidewalk ramps and driveway approaches, and we should be done.
They'll be happy. Any other questions?
All weather-dependent, though. I would have thought it had been sooner, but the rain's kind of beating this up a little bit.
Have we done any work with this company before, Ron?
We have, yeah. Excadrain has actually done a lot of sewer replacements and whatnot for us. This will be first for the paving part. They're pre-qualified to pave, they're bonded too, so we'll cross our fingers.
You feel comfortable then?
You know, I've never seen them pave, so for me to even say that, I don't know. We're just following contracting law. I mean, they submitted the lowest responsive bid, and if they can get a bond to do that, I guess the best way to put that is if there's nothing that we can't fix with their money if they screw it up.
Okay.
Okay, call for motion.
Okay, I would move that the Vine Street improvement job would be awarded to the Excadrain Construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the Vine Street improvements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
What's the bid bond on this project?
Motion's approved.
It'd be the same, it'd be the same dollar amount as what the construction price is. Well, no, let me back that up. Bid bond is for 10%, but we require a payment performance bond, which would require that be the amount that they bid. Bid bond's a little bit different.
Item number six, water utility CPI rate increase, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We're here before you tonight to discuss a proposed 2.8% inflationary increase to the water fund, actually all the utility funds, wastewater and as well as storm, but we'll start with the water. This increase will keep the water fund current with inflation, hopefully eliminate the need for future large rate increases as we've gone through in the last four to six years, the previous four to six years. Our goal as staff is to maintain our funds and run it similar to what you would with a business, and that is keep a handle on our costs. As you know, last year, we eliminated two positions out of public works that weren't related to the general fund. We looked at that as basically housekeeping and making sure that we continue on with using the rates as we said we were going to use them, and we saw that as an issue coming up. You know, with inflation, inflation got us a little bit more, so that's why the two positions were lost last year. At this point, what we're recommending is a 2.8% inflationary to cover this year. That's based out of the engineering news record, CCI, for the month of April. To give you a few highlights in the water fund, we're still moving forward with the river intake. Things look really good on that front. We're actually looking at probably going to the agencies for submission of a permit in probably May. We're working on a water rights piece issue along with that, and I think that that's moving in a positive direction. So all in all, it looks like, you know, a majority of what we've managed to save, which is in the capital fund, will be used towards this project. We're also working on a loan application with the state, which could save us substantially too. So there's a lot of heads to this project coming out of the water fund. It's pretty extensive. It sucks up a lot of time. One other thing we did this year, we replaced the water line on Vine Street, and we're going to try every year to do a small line replacement, just to keep up pace with that. There's a lot of big line replacements that need to be done. Unfortunately, we're trying to use the cash that we've accumulated towards the water treatment plant project, in which case we're having to just make repairs on these other lines at this point until we get this project done and have a definite cost on what that project is. We've had a couple of issues with our existing water plant this year. We've had several pumps that have failed, so we've had to spend more this year than what we have in the past two to three years on the water treatment plant, which we've, if you look at the condition of the outside of the building, that's by direction of staff to CH2M Hill, that's no reflection on them. We've basically said, don't put any extra into the building, and keep your costs as low as you can until we can get a new water plant built. But the guts of it, I guess if you want to say, we want to make sure that that's continuing to run. So we've actually spent probably $25,000 to $30,000 this year on pump replacements, on finished water pump replacements. So that was something that we haven't seen over the last couple of years, and, you know, what will it be next? I don't know, but we'll continue to maintain it, and that's what this inflationary increase does, and it helps cover CH2M Hill's cost and along with staff costs. So with that, I can answer any questions, but with that, we're requesting a 2.8% inflationary increase.
Ron, what are the ramifications if we don't approve the 2.8%?
What are they? You go backwards. So this year alone, if you look at our water fund budget, we've probably got, let's exclude capital. If we look at personnel costs this year, they're up, I want to say somewhere around $60,000 to $70,000 this year, and that's adding some staff. So if you don't account for that, then it goes backwards. Is it detrimental? At some point, it will be, yeah. I mean, at some point, you know, down the road, wherever that's at, instead of, like, I guess to give you a good example, in, let's say, five years, I don't know, whatever the project is, or whatever is required by DHS, they come in and say, well, you need to spend X on this project. It's going to require a rate increase. That rate increase, you know, depending on what the dollar amount is, could have been as low as 5% to 7%, but in the case of not doing your annual inflationary increases, it could be upwards of 15, you know, if we're not keeping pace with that. I mean, is it going to hurt us in any way this year? No. No, the answer's no. It's just a matter of keeping up, and basically, that's in our resolutions, and that's for this body to decide, you know, how they want to go about that process. As staff, what we're doing is we're bringing it to you and basically showing you what we believe in order to keep up pace with inflation, that's what it is, but it's obviously up to this body to decide that.
Mr. Mayor, to respond to your question, I think back to 2012, 2013, when we were seated as a council, and this was a hot-button issue, and I know that no increase is popular with the public. This city has been through hell with water, and I don't want to see any unnecessary increase. But it was exactly a lack of these kinds of small, metered increases for many, many years that caused us to be in the situation we were in in 2010, 11, that we had to go to the large increases. This is the kicking the can. This was, this is the kicking the can down the road that got us where we were then. And so while I agree with the questioning of, is it necessary? I've yet to see staff or department head come to us with any unnecessary request for an increase in fee. And so I just don't want to see us reach a point where we begin to kick that can down the road again. And I would strongly urge fellow councilors to approve this, because this is what, this is what leads to bigger problems down the road, maybe not for you, but for somebody else who's going to sit in your chair.
Could I just add on to that? I think it, when annual adjustments are not made to take into account cost, it requires an organization to basically eat its young. And that not only forestalls the issue later on, that you're talking about, Jason, about larger, double-digit type of increases, but it also requires trying to reassemble and pick up capital expenditures and/or staffing, or supplies, or whatever, that could have been bought incrementally when the price was right, instead of having to buy them on a spot market. So I support these, this is good government, to address cost increases on an annual basis.
And I know that the headline's going to read, 2.8% increase, and that's going to fire people up. And the headline should read, council's finally doing their job and looking out for the future of Lebanon's water system. That's what it should read, Sarah. But, you know, anytime you see an increase, it's gonna, and I understand, I'm a water customer too, as are all of you. And, you know, I have young kids, and my washing machine runs nonstop, it seems like. I can't wait until they cannot get their clothes dirty, but the alternative is much worse. And I, you know, we are one catastrophic failure away in that current water treatment plant, or that current system, from disaster, absolute disaster. And I wish, I hope the public understands how dire the situation is with this, and how important the maintenance and the upkeep of this water system is.
I agree with Jason all the way, and I don't want to go backwards at this point.
Well, and one of the things that, I guess, just for council to be aware of, as your staff, we're constantly looking at this. When we get through this water treatment plant project, and whatever that takes, and there may be a period of two to three years coming up where we don't have to do an inflationary because we're looking, we're looking pretty good. You know, when you're, when you're talking 20-plus million-dollar project, you know, to be 10% off on your estimate and to calculate all that stuff, it has a big impact on what funds you have. So I guess, just so that you're aware, we look at this, we look at it on a, probably more than we should, actually, but we're constantly looking at it. And if we come to a point where things look solid, our recommendation would be to leave it alone, because it's not any fun for us to come up and have to ask for this as well, so.
Any other questions?
I want to make a comment, though, that last year, by doing zero, we, in a sense, took a small step back there, because inflation did march on. I sure would, would want to compound that again, because we will start losing position. Also, I'd like to say that I think a lot of cities have neglected what's underground, and we put it there, and 50 years later, it hasn't been touched. And then when it does break, if it's a major water line, et cetera, it's very expensive. And I've been proud that this town has that, what do we do, eight miles of small water line replacement?
Yeah, and that is, that is a blessing.
And we did it to be ahead of the curve. Our system still has places that need a lot of attention. I like to see us, it's not just a water treatment plant, it's the whole system that delivers that water. And I believe if we went back into late 90s, we had somewhere around a 40%, 50% water loss.
Yeah, and we're showing, we're actually showing a pretty good water loss right now. And we've got a leak detection study that's going to start here in the next couple of weeks. We're still trying to pencil out exactly what that is. We don't believe there's as much leaks going on, because we think we'd have seen it, but it could be meters, we're not sure. We're just running through a gamut of options there to make sure that we're running that unaccounted-for water loss as low as we can.
Okay. The city manager, I'm sorry, city attorney, read the resolution.
Resolution number 2015-13, a resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's water rates.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2015-13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Resolution 2015-13 passes. And next is a wastewater utility CPI rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is a 2.8% proposed increase to the wastewater fund. This one is probably, out of all three of your utilities, probably the most critical at this point. I think Counselor Fisher summed it up pretty well. Nobody's paid attention to the underground. Fortunately, we had the small water line crew. It's too bad we don't have a small sewer line crew, because we're seeing multiple failures in our sewer system, especially in the older parts of town. We've been able to handle it so far. One thing about a gravity sewer is it's sometimes easier to repair and get a little more life out of it than a pressurized system, so we've been able to handle that. We've also seen a major uptick in the amount of sewer laterals that we've replaced over the course of the last two, three years. Good program. DEQ loves it, because we're reducing the amount of INI that we have. But again, the uptick is there are failed laterals. A lot of these folks are coming into us with absolutely zero service. They come in, and rotor ruder was out, and we have no service. It's completely, it's completely broken, in which case, we, typically, what we would do is if we can't fix it quick with our crews, we run an emergency contract and try and get people back into business. We like to get three quotes, but it's also not very feasible to have somebody without sewer for two or three weeks, so it just doesn't work. But so far, you know, I mean, we've been able to keep up on that. We're still focusing on the West Side Interceptor. It's important. We've got a lot of potential for development on the south end of town still, at which point that, that big line's going to need to be put in, at least the Walker Road. Still on our radar. We were going to try and get to a phase of it this year, but with everything else that's going, and with the affluent pump station, we're basically using that cash that we had set aside for the West Side Interceptor, for the affluent pump station, this year, because it needed to be replaced. Obviously, the 70s-era vintage pumps, they're just not cutting it anymore, so it's time for new ones. With that, that kind of gives you a little bit of a summary on the wastewater. But out of all the utilities, this is the one to keep an eye on. I know it's got staff a little bit. We're nervous about it. Jason and I are both nervous about it. It's, it's got a lot of potential for failures to happen, you know, multiple failures. Water lines, you know, we've got a pretty good handle on those, but, but the sewer mains, you know, as Tristan and his crew are TVing those, we're finding more and more and more. And we just, all we can do is put them on the list, or if they're real bad, go in and make a spot repair, and then get to them when we can. So with that, I can answer any questions about wastewater.
Okay. Have the city attorney read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2015-14, a resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's wastewater rates.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2015-14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Resolution 2015-14 is approved. And lastly, we have the storm drainage utility CPI rate increase. Ron.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last one. This is, again, a 2.8% proposed inflationary rate increase to the storm drainage utility. We've been able to do a few capital projects with this. Last year, we were able to fund a majority, if not all, I can't remember, of the Cascade Road improvements, piping all that ditch and whatnot. We were also able to get the downstream end of the Cedar Drive, Rose Drive neighborhood storm drainage in, so that we can take off and finish the rest of that as, as staff time allows. Most of the time when we do a storm drainage project, we end up having to do it with our guys in-house, because we don't have the funds that it takes to do a regular capital project with it, so. But it also has, has been really good, in the sense that our collections crew has been able to go out, and they have done a lot of cleaning. They're TVing the storm drainage as well, although cracks in storm lines, it's not as big a deal. We start looking at them when there's holes in storm lines, you know, just based on the, on complete failure. So with that, there's really nothing, nothing more to report on that, other than it's, it's very fortunate that we have it. It's been a good, it's been a good utility. We've been able to maintain the system pretty well with it, so.
Any questions? Okay, with that, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Resolution Number 2015-15, a resolution adopting the city of Lebanon's storm water drainage utility rates.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2015-15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Ron. And next up is city manager's report.
Good evening, council and members of the audience. Rather than recite the written narrative that I provided in my report, I wanted to focus on our community visioning process, where we've been and where we're going here in the very near future. In January and February, there were a series of focus groups, stakeholder interviews, community meetings, and a survey that was done both in hard copy and online, to establish what the community felt were the focus areas that we needed to look at when we think about a new community vision. Out of that process, there were six focus areas that became evident, and those are downtown, arts and culture, community friendliness, formerly known as connectedness, education, community and economic development, and health and safety. So once those were established through that initial process, a board of about 20 to 25 citizens, that we're calling the sounding board, was assembled, representing a vast area of different interests throughout the community. We wanted a good cross-section of opinions and thoughts about our community vision, and we tasked that group with looking at all of the input that we'd received to date, and look at the focus areas, and help us determine what needed to be queried of the community now. Now that we've established these focus areas, now we want to, if you will, drill down on each of those focus areas and ask some more specific questions through a second survey instrument. So that is something that is being put together as we speak. It'll be rolled out at a community gathering this next Wednesday, April 15th, at the Boys and Girls Club. This is the marquee event, if you will, for the vision process. This is the community's chance to come together, assemble in one place, look at what we've identified, and express our thoughts and opinions about where we go from here with this process. We're going to have live-time voting clickers that report the results immediately up on a screen through a PowerPoint setup. So we're going to ask the community questions, very similar to what the survey will have, and get some immediate input from the community about those matters. We'll then be launching that survey on our website for the vision. Also, we're going to be at the Biz Expo next Tuesday, for another opportunity for people to add their input into the vision. And then, once that second round of information gathering is done, again, the sounding board will come together and work to put together a document that ultimately will come to you, the city council, in June. So that's where we are right now. I wanted to get you all up to speed on all of that, and I want to encourage you to stop by our booth at the Biz Expo next Tuesday. I'll be working a shift there, along with our consultants, and some of the other city staff will be there as well. And then on April 15th, next Wednesday, come out to the Boys and Girls Club. It should be very interesting, and a chance to mingle with our fellow community members and discuss some important things about our community. So that's my report for this evening. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gary. And lastly, we have item added number 10, Chamber of Commerce Tourism Services Agreement.
Good evening, again. The council had a work session on March 25th to talk about an anticipated increase in our transient room tax because of the new Boulder Falls Inn, which we believe will be opening in the middle of May. That opening of the new hotel will cause a very significant increase in the revenue that comes into the city. And it caused the council, in the month of March, to review how we would handle our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce does some very good work for us in maintaining and operating, staffing a visitor center, and also for administering a grant program for tourism dollars that promote the community. So out of the discussion on the 25th, it was the consensus of the council that we continue the, the support of the chamber in operating a visitor information center, however, to expand that. Right now, its hours are inclusive of Monday through Friday. However, it's, it's a fact that a lot of our visitors come on weekends, because, you know, if you're working, folks, that's when you, if you want to come and explore Lebanon, or maybe you have a job offer to come and be a part of this community, chances are, good chance that you're going to do that on the weekend. So we had some discussion at the work session about asking the chamber to open that on Saturday. The chamber had developed some numbers as far as their staffing requirements to do that. And that increases the amount that we would give the chamber over the established amounts by $15,000. This new agreement that we've drafted for you to consider tonight includes that additional funding, total funding for the chamber's operations of the visitor center within total $30,000. The other aspect of the agreement addresses the grant program. Currently, about $30,000 comes out of the transient room tax for that program. Again, at the discussion on March 25th, it was the consensus that with the additional revenues that would be coming in, we wanted to see additional promotion of the community through an extra $20,000 added to that 30. So we'd be looking now at a $50,000 pot of money that would be used to promote various events and activities around the community that would draw people to our town. The agreement reflects that change. It is a three-year agreement with a definite end. That will require the parties to review how the agreement has worked. Sometimes when you have an ongoing agreement, it's easy to kind of let it go. This one will expire in three years. There is no inflationary increase for the chamber in this agreement. That was contemplated because it was a three-year agreement. And Shelley Garrett, Executive Director of the chamber, indicated that she felt that that was a reasonable number of years, given the money that we were providing for the staffing levels. So that's the thumbnail sketch of the agreement that's before you tonight. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those, or if you have questions for Shelley, I'm sure she'd be happy to address those as well.
Thanks for putting this together so quickly for us in the work session. I think it meets the basic principles that we spoke about. Recommend approval.
Other questions?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Let's have a discussion first.
Yeah. Add something? I just want to make sure everyone's aware that the change in the staffing level is anticipated to occur on May 1, so that we'll have the additional coverage for the Strawberry Festival, when a lot of people are checking us out.
Now, it looks like the total that we'd be giving the chamber would be $80,000, then.
That's correct.
Total, okay, yeah.
And that also addresses another point that, which may, which is a change from the last agreement, which was...
last agreement, which was a percentage. This one sets a flat amount.
Yes, correct.
Also, recommendation from the work session.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, now I'll call for motion.
Recommend move that the agreement be approved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Services Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And one thing I'd like to say, Shelley, thank you for your work with us on this. And also, I -- and I know Wayne had some concerns about vandalism, but I'm still a real big proponent of a kiosk, so I think that would be -- to me, a kiosk makes a lot of sense.
I agree.
So hopefully, we can work on that, too.
I'm also looking to get you some grants to support that.
Good, very good. Great, thank you. Items from council?
I'd just like to say that I'd like to thank the city for giving me this apparatus to help me hear better. Hey, I haven't heard so good in a long, long time. So it's great, so thank you.
Awesome. How'd that work?
I'd say I had an opportunity to go down, and I spent some time at the police department with some of the newer patrol officers, and did a daytime and then a nighttime. I tried to do a whole nighttime, but I couldn't stay awake the whole time. I had to go home. But I just, again, it just reinforces, in light of what's seen in the media today about law enforcement, to go down there in person and see our law enforcement officers, how they act, what they do, what kind of character they have and integrity they have. I'm just so proud of our Lebanon law enforcement, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thanks.
Good. And I just was thinking about this, and I realize that it's actually this month, on the 30th, April 30th, there's -- we're going to have a lunch with the mayor and city manager at the Veterans Home. And Gary and I will be out there. We're going to invite the public, and it's just going to be a time where people can come, they can see the Veterans Home if they haven't been out there before, and we'll have lunch. The canteen is going to be open out there, and people can -- it'll be a no-host, where people can buy their lunch if they want. But just a time where people can come, ask questions, get to know us, and also get to see the Veterans Home if they haven't done that, because that's -- if you didn't get to make it out to the car show at the Veterans Home, it was quite a fun time out there.
Yes, it was.
It was really nice. Really well done. Yes, it's at noon.
I'd like to add something.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to let you all know, if you tune into Kegow Radio next Monday morning at 9:30, you'll hear yours truly being interviewed about the community vision. So I'm scheduled for 9:30 to 10:30, if you can tune me in.
And Gary and I will be on that on Valley Talk the day of the Expo, talking about the vision process, so.
And you mentioned two of the activities with the Vision Committee, but next Thursday, there --
It's the Steering Committee.
-- committee will be meeting again, so.
Yes.
By the time we meet again, there will be significant activity to this.
We'll have both the Biz Expo and the community meeting accomplished, yes.
And I'd like to say that this coming Saturday, we have the Walk a Mile for a Child out at the Justice Center, starts at 8:30. And then followed by that is, I believe it's Paint the Town Blue or something, a program. I know you guys are supposed to speak at that, too.
That'll be in front of the Justice Center after the walk.
Right, in front of the Justice Center. So anybody that can make it, come on out. It's a great opportunity.
It is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to announce, just a quick announcement or a reminder to everybody who has not yet filed their statement of economic interest. You have until April 15th. They must be postmarked by then or before.
We don't need to get that, do we?
Trey, did you --
You're welcome to, if you'd like, but it's not required.
Anything else? Okay, we have a last opportunity for public comments. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak, this is another opportunity. And see none. Items from the press. Do you have anything? Okay. With that, we're going to adjourn, and we'll convene into executive session after. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene.